I got it. Sorry. So, we got minutes from both meetings today?
Yeah.
Just got the one meeting. Okay. And that was which?
Two weeks ago. It's terrible. I feel like we should close the curtains.
Perfect timing. I think it's just five.
Don't move, Margaret.
What's the date of that one?
Ten twenty-six.
So, we approved the minutes from ten twenty-six and we're waiting on ten fourteen or something?
No, it's like June something.
Stop.
Well, there is one from June twenty-second, but the other one is like the early part of October. Thanks for having my back.
Mayor's communication, other than what's on the agenda?
No, actually, I would have just mentioned that because that item is on your agenda, I just wanted the Finance Subcommittee to know that underneath your supplemental appropriation, ninety-five hundred, I have put in a request, it'll be on your agenda at your next city council meeting, which is Wednesday, to remove that item from the city council agenda. So, just so you know tonight.
I'm gonna jump to the CPA request because the Cook County Road Drinking Water Supply Protection is a large item and we have a lot of guests to deal with that. CPA approved this unanimously. And what's incredible, the Southampton part of it was approved by their town meeting, a hundred and seventy-five to nothing, which is like a first. So, that influenced me. I said, well, if they want it that bad. This protects the water rights on land that is in Southampton, but directly over our aquifer. And without saying too much more, that's the reason we're doing this, committee members, is to use our funds to pay for the CR, Conservation Restriction, on this property so it can't be developed. And I'll let Jessica continue. Is there any? You might wanna go over the details that are on the page here with the budget and everything?
Sure.
Timeline, budget, whatever.
Okay. So, it is a complicated deal. I will say that this has a project that has been on the city's radar since eighties. There's a letter from Stuart Beckley, the property owner, requesting a discussion about the importance of this property on the aquifer. So, this has been a longstanding conservation priority for decades. The family is now ready to sell. It's a complicated land deal. We had been meeting with Southampton, the mayor was in on those meetings, we had many discussions about how we were gonna make the numbers work. Kestrel thankfully came in and sort of saved the day for us and figured out how the numbers could work and figured out how the deal could work so that it was an equitable split.
That's them.
That's Mark, right?
The trust, Kestrel Trust.
Kestrel Trust, yep. And so, the way that it's structured is that in Southampton, we want it to keep ownership of the land itself. And for East Hampton, it's important for us to own the CR because that's where the rights are held and that's how we can sort of control the uses of what's happening on that land. So, it made sense for it to be structured that way, but the way the land deals are is that the money, the value is in the rights of what you can do on that land. So, the conservation restriction was a lot higher in value than it was just owning the land and the underlay. So, the grant is, Southampton has taken the lead and has applied for a land grant, which we have not heard yet back on, but we're very hopeful that we would be awarded that money. The backup plan is if that grant falls through, Mark is already working on drafting a drinking water supply grant, so there's another grant program that we can apply to if the land grant doesn't pan out. Like you said, Southampton has already approved their portion through town meeting in May. And so, we're waiting on the grant, but we're putting our skin in the game, as we all like to say, in with this project. So, it's a very collaborative cooperative project between both communities. If you wanna look at the budget, I can try to explain the numbers, although really it's Mark who put it all together.
You'll let Mark do it if you want to.
So, yeah, go ahead. Why don't you talk about the budget?
Before you jump into, I'd just like to make a comment, too, that Joe is here and this has, you know, gone through as many, many, many work. And I always like to ask Jessica if this has been challenging? But it has, many meetings have happened, so this has gone before the Board of Public Works and many meetings with Southampton. Thank you, everybody, for your time. But the city of East Hampton did not want to have ownership of that property and, but felt strongly, and the board voted strongly, that this is something that we would like to protect our aquifer.
Thank you. So, the project, I kind of describe it as a three-legged stool overall, and it's going to take, to make it work, CPA funds from Southampton, which again, have already been appropriated, CPA funds from East Hampton, as well as one of those two grants from the Commonwealth. We can't get both of the grants, you can only get one. We applied to a land grant already. We should be hearing any day.
I didn't think so.
We just emailed them today. They said, we hope, you know, they're aiming for the end of the month. The land grant is for more money. It has a four-hundred thousand dollar maximum. The Drinking Water Supply Protection Grant only has a three-hundred fifty thousand dollar maximum. So, we worked out the budgets with either of those. And when Southampton went through, they approved the greater amount, just in case they got the lesser grant. And that's basically what we're asking East Hampton to do as well, just to cover our bases so we don't have to go back. As Jessica mentioned, the application for the Drinking Water Supply Grant is on December sixth, so that's already underway. Bay Pac is helping us with that, which is a great thing. So, again, it is a complicated deal. It's a phased deal, in a way, and it really comes from splitting up the costs, as well as the property interests, equitably, between the two communities, as well as kind of sticking to legally what could be done. Just for instance, if Southampton came in and used CPA funds to buy the land, East Hampton then couldn't come in and use CPA funds to buy the CR, because if Southampton bought the land, they'd be required to put a CR on the land. The CR would become worthless at that point. So, we had to really split it up. Basically, the city of East Hampton will be paying for Conservation Restriction on the top ten acres of the parcel. I say "top," it's basically shaped like a triangle, which is why I use the triangle in the application. So, the northernmost ten acres. Then, when Southampton protects their portion of the land, they're going to donate a Conservation Restriction on the remaining fifteen acres of the parcel to East Hampton as part of the deal. So, ultimately, East Hampton will end up getting the CR on the entire property. The CR was valued, I believe, at around nine-hundred sixty thousand dollars. They could put fourteen houses on this property. So, from that perspective, yes, it is a big expensive project, but again, East Hampton would be getting a nine-hundred forty thousand dollar CR, or nine-hundred sixty thousand dollar CR for three-hundred forty-three thousand dollars and change.
Now, when you say that, you're comparing the development capability of the property and its value versus what we're paying for a CR. In other words, the price of fourteen homes?
Yeah, would be nine hundred, yeah, exactly. Well, and actually, honestly, if someone was to be able to come out and actually just purchase a CR straight on the land, it would be nine-hundred sixty thousand dollars. The fact is that we're dibbing it up, so Southampton kicks in some of the funding and the state kicks in some of the funding to get the equitable split between the communities, which was really difficult to do, but we ultimately worked it out. So, it will take a few steps. There are some basic project costs, which are pretty common to a land project like this, which we pretty much worked out. And then Jess worked in some contingency costs. Again, the first contingency cost, you can see in that East Hampton column, the twenty-five thousand dollars, that is if we need to go for Drinking Water Supply Grant instead of the land grant. Southampton would have to give you another twenty-five. And then the miscellaneous contingency, you know, how much legal costs and things like that ultimately will be, but it seems reasonable, and Jess and I went over the budget beforehand. So, Southampton will be paying a little more for the project, but then again, they're gonna be getting the land they can do, you know, passive recreational projects on it. They could create a small park without payment, pavement, they could create a community garden. It would be, this Conservation Restriction would be negotiated between Southampton and the city of East Hampton, with some strictures placed on it by the Commonwealth through the grant, whichever grant they get, you know, they have their say in what the CR says. So, it would be really a three-party negotiation there. So, that is pretty much in a nutshell.
When you talk about, just so my other counselors understand, when you talk about the negotiations, you're talking about what can the land be used for, passive recreation, no pavement, certain kinds of uses, agricultural, say, but without certain kinds of fertilizers or pesticides?
Absolutely.
Things like that, that's what the negotiation deals with, guys.
We wanna make sure that we're protecting the water supplies. We wanna make sure whatever activities are happening on that land are not going to deprecate the water supply.
And, Joe, you'll confirm that this is primary aquifer?
Oh, absolutely. It's a credible source.
Yeah, this is the-
And it's primary, prime development property. I mean, if it was sold, they wouldn't have any problem putting, oh, it's all-
It's flat, it perks, and if you know the aquifer at all, you know, although the aquifer itself is quite large, there's a clay layer over most of it. There's only one small area of recharge area where it's sand and gravel on the top, where the water can actually percolate in and recharge the aquifer. And this is one of the last remaining properties, over the recharge area. So, that's what makes it so important.
We have to thank the landowners for going to us first. But there is a deadline on this? Was it the grant application or the sale or something? I know we wanted to move this along before the end of-
So, maybe the vote that Southampton needs to happen in December, this land grant?
Yeah.
Right?
So, we wanted our funding in place, which is why I pushed to have this, what do you call, public hearing next week, so that we get this settled, so on December they can get it done.
I should also mention that the landowners are actually offering a bargain sale on the property. From the initial, the initial appraisal on the land was one million fifty thousand dollars. It jumped up, with an updated appraisal, to one million one-hundred sixty thousand. And they agreed, just to keep things simple, to stick to the original price. And the abutting landowner, Barbara the plant, has done just yeoman's work, keeping all eleven heirs to this property in line. It has not been easy, a number of them live out of state, a lot of them want to develop it, and it would be developed almost instantaneously if this falls through.
And the owners were extremely patient?
They are, and yes, they've been patient with everyone involved, including their family members. It's been a struggle.
And Mark, I believe you said to us, you're quite confident we're gonna get one of these agreements?
Yeah, I mean, I can't handicap it, but, you know, the state already did come out to look at the land for the land grant. I think they were impressed. Obviously, they took their poker face on, they're a little hard to read. But, you know, we have two swings at the plate here, with both the land and the Drinking Water Grant. And if, for some reason, we didn't get the land, I cannot imagine why a Drinking Water Grant, I mean, it's such an important resource. I'd be shocked.
So, you guys know that this historically, purchasing of land protection, open space protection, is the most expensive thing CPA pays for, which is why this is high, but it's also one of the most important aspects of the CPA, in my opinion. So, that's also why the CPA committee voted in and must have supported it.
So, can I ask a question?
Sure.
So, and I'm probably just missing. So, the land is owned by whom currently?
By the family.
Where do they, is it Southampton land?
Yes.
Okay. And they contacted us, why? Well, I mean, to do this, but I mean, but-
So that they-
Right.
Did they already know that their land was-
Over the act-
Part of, yes.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Since the eighties.
They really, like I said-
It's a well-known, it's a well-known fact.
Okay, okay. And so, they decided to sell their property, or dispense with it, or dissolve themselves of it. And so, they came to us and said, you're gonna wanna protect this because we're gonna sell our land.
And just to like-
Essentially.
Well, and just to let you know, like, working with two communities was really, is very challenging. So, you know, and especially, you know, one's a city, one's a town, so different demographics, you know, town meeting, con-con, so many, 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 many meetings. That's why I said they've been, the family's been very patient.
I would say, I think you've read the situation generally correctly, the city of East Hampton, then the town of East Hampton.
It's been that long.
First approached the family, and they weren't ready again, they have eleven heirs. It got to the point where, you know, the family, you know, jointly wants to cash out on the property. And two landowners, or two of the owners in particular, would really like to see the land protected. And they basically held all the other folks at bay to see if this project could work through before it was actually sold off to the developer.
So, you're saying, you said earlier, that the land on the open market is like one million one-hundred and sixty thousand? And they're selling it, if you will, from a real estate perspective, for the one, just slightly over one million?
One million fifty thousand. That was the original appraisal on the-
So, they're losing a hundred grand, but-
Yeah.
Divided by eleven, that's a thousand dollars, so.
Yeah. They could have held us our feet to the fire, but still, you never know here.
Okay.
Even if you see in the map here, here's, this actually shows the location of the land and the board, and you see it in South Hampton. I have copies of this.
Is this considered the northern ten acres?
Yes, yeah.
But eventually, all the acreage is gonna come to East Hampton CR. Southampton's gonna donate the other fifteen acres.
Right, yeah.
So, we have the CR, they have the property for recreational development within the restriction.
Now, part of this agreement, you're using your CPA funds from Southampton, we're using CPA funds from East Hampton. So, that therefore, from a legal perspective, does that make it bound to not be developed? Like, the fact that you're, we're going through this, you cannot develop it?
Absolutely. And I'm not from the town of Seattle, I'm just coordinating things.
Oh, I'm sorry.
He's from a trust that coordinates-
I'll just keep pointing.
I work in Amherst, Southern Florida.
So, Southampton-
But then, the Conservation Restriction is-
Yes.
Runs with the land, it's-
So, once we get all that signed, sealed, delivered?
Yes, it runs with the land, and it will, in perpetuity, make a way to development, right?
I just wanted to make sure they couldn't develop it at one point.
Well, that's the whole point.
Yep.
That's the whole point. And the other point, too, that, you know, and Joe, you can provide more information on that, like, for East Hampton to purchase the property from Southampton, then we would have to maintain it. That was not something that the board was interested in doing. So, after many, many meetings, and thankfully, the, you know, your help, this was agreed upon, and it's, you know, it's more than a fair for both sides.
If we only get the tax bills that we have to pay?
In maintaining property and another-
So, we only are going to-
Get the CR.
Own the CR, owning the rights?
And there's actually two layers of protection. When Southampton purchases the land, it will be protected under Article ninety-seven, or ninety-one.
Ninety-seven.
Ninety-seven. And-
That's an agricultural restriction.
What was that? No, it's whenever municipality purchases land for conservation, it's protected through that, but the CPA also has this added layer of protection that requires a CR on any land purchased for conservation by municipality, so it's really double.
Is there any, just 'cause this question may come up, is there any reason, point, that this would have ever needed to go through the Property Committee? 'Cause it's not, 'cause we're not buying it?
No, it doesn't. This can go before the Property Committee. This is just CPA, using CPA funds and application through-
So, it's just a monetary-
Right, it has to come, CPA, when they vote on it, a project, then it comes to me to be, to agree to put forth the funding for it, and that, and then enhance city council finance back to city council.
Okay.
So, it's a funding request, it's not a property request, because we're not purchasing it.
When the other, the other CR, sorry to interrupt, I'm just thinking back in my head, the last Conservation Restriction we purchased with CPA money was for Paul Street Extension Area, the conservation area around the Paul Street Extension. I don't think it went through property, I think it's-
CPA purchase, anything CPA does-
But the Conserva, there was a Conservation Restriction that was signed, and because the Conservation Commission was gonna be the owner of the CR, they were the entity that reviewed the CR.
But the answer is no, doesn't need to go to property.
CPA, CPA, when they appropriate funds from a committee, they go directly to the city, and the city council approves it through finance because it's a financial-
Right. I have to put forward, I have to put forward the request, I have to approve the request because only I can put forth funding.
Okay.
And then it goes for approval.
Okay.
But it's not our property, so it would be property.
But the Conservation Restriction has to go through the Property Subcommittee?
No.
No, 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 no.
All right. Okay, sorry, I don't mean to-
In my, in my twenty years, it has never had to do that, or since the CPA has.
CPA request. And that's exactly what it's for, the open space protection.
Okay.
Anything else? It'd be light, nice if you had those for the counselors, those maps. I have one from CPA, but-
Really nice, very nicely done.
If you provide them that evening, they don't go to their boxes, we're finding out, to get stuff.
I'll bring them along.
Because everything's digital now.
Kindly mannered.
Dan, do you have anything?
Nope.
I'm gonna make a motion, then, that we approve the, there's two parts of this appropriation, so I'm only gonna make a motion that we approve the Cook County Road Drinking Water Supply and Open Space Protection Project for three-hundred forty-three thousand seven-hundred and sixty-two point five zero part of this appropriation request.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next Wednesday, Jessica, Mark, if you can, Joe, if you wanna come?
Awesome.
All right. All right, we're gonna go on to Barbara. This was also approved by the CPA. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Jessica.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you very much.
This vital records-
My pleasure.
Preservation request, do you have that, do you have that book with you, Dan, to show them?
It's inside.
We don't need it.
We know it's your way out of South Hampton.
We've done this before, Dan and Peg, we give them funding so that all of the, so vital records can be safely, all the records from the, what is it, the forties and fifties, which were not, they can be sealed and properly stored. Why don't you explain it further? We've done it, we've done it before with CPA funding.
This will be the fifth, the fifth round.
Fifth round of protection.
I have one, I have one volume of births that was big and fat, so I held off on it. So, that's my last birth, up to this point where now, starting in nineteen fifty, fifty, beginning of the fifties, that we now do birth certificates electronically, so I don't have to access those as frequently, because they're not, you know, but prior to that, if somebody wants a copy, I have to take them out and squish them down, and it's just, it's just a mess. And so, I've gradually been trying to take these records that were kind of falling apart, and they get rusty, and if you wanna take, you know, to make a copy, you have to squish, I mean, you're welcome to stop on your way out, because it, and then what they do is they take the records, we send them to a company up in Vermont, and it's done a wonderful job, it's really well-respected in New England, and they, they just deacidify the paper and they encapsulate it in plastic, and each page can be removed on its own if it ever needs to be copied for records, and it's just wonderful.
It's like antique preservation.
They look beautiful.
Do you do it in batches? Did I miss that, too? You do years, each year?
Well, yeah, it's been, what he does is, Joe, from Brown, Co-File, comes down and he does a survey of all the books, and then I would kind of look and see, like, which ones are worse. So, we started with the older, the worst ones, that were crumbling and just falling apart, and-
How old were they?
Our earliest records are nineteen oh five.
Oh.
So, we have all the very early ones, so we're kind of, just kind of filling in the holes now. And they look really nice, and they do a wonderful job, and-
And you're caught up to nineteen fifty?
Well, it's, it's, let me see, we're doing, I'm asking to do-
We're at nineteen oh eight.
Let's see. Okay, all right, the ones that listed in here, we've done nineteen oh six to nineteen forty-nine, okay, it's the volume of marriages, nineteen seventeen to nineteen twenty-one, that is a vague, foggy thing. And then, ten volumes of death records, and three volumes to births, okay, up to nineteen fifty-two, because starting in nineteen fifty-three, if you came in to get a copy of your birth certificate, and you were born in nineteen fifty-three, it would be done electronically.
Oh, so, can you give me those marriages again?
Let's see, the volume of marriages is nineteen seventeen to nineteen twenty-one.
Okay.
The ten volumes of death records, from nineteen forty-one to nineteen fifty.
Okay.
And three volumes of birth, fifty-one, fifty, fifty-one, and fifty-two. And I have a proposal from Co-File, and they break down exactly how much each book costs.
Okay.
Yep.
And that's where you get the twelve thousand?
Barb, I know you provided that CPA, but can you provide some of that information to the council?
I think it came with the-
No, all I had, Barb, all I had is CPA.
We got CPA's worksheet, that's all that comes, so if you have, you know, where it talks about which records, they may wanna look at the-
Yeah, no, I'll do my whole-
You don't have to do the whole package, just vital information.
No, I'll just do the whole thing. So, when did they go electronic for?
Fifty-some, fifty-three.
Starting in nineteen fifty-three.
All, all records?
Yeah.
That's amazing, that seems early.
Just birth records. So, not marriage, not death.
No, marriages are not electronic at all.
Right. So, just birth records?
Deaths started, like, three years ago.
When you say electronic, they're copied?
I go onto the virtual gateway, come to the-
Did someone scan them in? Is that what you mean by electronic?
Well, I think that they were getting them from electronically way back, so they have uploaded them all, and it was started-
Like microfiche or something back in the days?
I don't know how it is, but-
I can't even imagine what they did in nineteen fifty-three.
Yeah, but it comes out, like, it doesn't look like the record, it's just the information.
A little micro-bench.
Yeah, yeah. No, it prints out, it prints out like a, you know, just like record.
Just that, because-
James Bondish.
So, someone entered the data, is what you're saying at some point?
I don't know how they did it. They had it there, and I wish they would do it with deaths, too.
This was also approved by CPA unanimously.
So, it's just a continuation of a project that we've done, gotten-
Is this an annual thing, or is it-
Well, I've kind of, two thousand seven, two thousand nine, two thousand eleven, two thousand thirteen, three other dates.
So, a motion to, any other questions, Dan? Motion to approve the twelve thousand, somebody do that one.
A motion to approve CPA grants of twelve thousand seven-hundred and seventy-four dollars to preserve and restore a city's vital records, births, marriages, and deaths.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And I do wanna let you know that I will be at a conference next week, so I will not be at the meeting.
I'll be able to tell everybody, but I won't, and so we'll clear the dates.
And along with that, I know you're gonna be getting a financial request, you're gonna be scheduling public hearings for the next meeting. I need to know, like, by Monday. If you think-
Given that I will probably not have a computer or anything because I'm moving, I don't know what, if I can answer that question.
Well, you can just tell, because I will not be around to do the legal-
Well, let me ask the Finance Director and the mayor, whatever I'm getting, how fast do you need this approved?
I would like you to schedule a public hearing on it.
So, yes.
Oh, okay, so for the-
I was going to ask you.
Okay, that's why I missed it. So, whatever it is, we will schedule a public hearing for it for the following meeting.
Does he know what it is?
No, he doesn't.
I haven't-
I mean, I've already, I've already got it on their agenda, but they don't have their agenda.
I didn't know you talked to them about it.
Nope, 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 nope.
Is it a critical thing, or why don't you tell me?
No, it's timely. It's not, it's critical to a lot of people, but it's not that type of a request, it's timely. It's a matter of, it's a COLA request, and I'd like to have it done before, so that It's a matter of, it's a COLA request, and I'd like to have it done before, so that we don't have to go into retros, I'd like to have it done before January.
Gotcha.
You know?
So it, so it's an ordinance and stuff?
Right, yeah.
Normally, we, is it a pay plan thing?
Yep.
Normally, we do both the ordinance and the, because financially, the ordinance is required because it's pay plan.
So I'll get that add in.
You can get that prepared.
There's nothing else on you.
If I forget to do that, you guys will remind me on Wednesday.
And that's the only transfer request that I'm putting forward on this, on next week's agenda.
You're not ready.
So Melissa or Karen, tell me what this hundred thou, what is an OPEB stabilization account, I forget.
OPEB.
O.
Other.
Other.
Post employment benefits.
Oh, yeah, that's what I need too.
And what?
And so this is for the, it's a savings account, in a sense, to start the funding for, it's retirement benefits for people like me, when I retire, I'm entitled to health insurance. That cost, we've been doing pay as you go, just like we used to do retirement, and now we have to do an appropriation for that retirement every year, to, to catch up. You know, we look at the actuary. So we've been doing actuaries for a number of years to recognize the cost of the benefits that, that the current retirees are entitled to, and current employees will be entitled to in their retirement, and being able to fund them, not as you go, but have a, sort of, fund the obligation as we go along. And so we are not fully funded in that, and so this is our account that we put money into to save for the future.
This one hurts. This one hurts.
Why does it hurt?
Because it does, it's, you know, when you're looking at, I mean, it's, it's necessary, but it's not like putting in a little stabilization fund for capital.
It's not a savings account, it's money.
You know, OPEB, other, it's, you know, other post-employment benefits.
It's an obligation.
Health insurance, it's, you know, an obligation to have money tucked away to cover future insurance, health insurance for retirees. This one hurts. It's a lot, you know, but we, we have to.
So is this going to be an ongoing, is this a true-up annually, or is it a true-up quarterly?
Uh, it's not true-up.
There's, yeah, the, one of those, like, actuariales.
Yeah, um, so we need to contribute to it at least annually. It's more of a good faith showing than it is a.
This one hurts.
Clearly.
It's painful.
As it, as it is, as much of the obligation. So they've changed reporting rules for the last couple of years, and we have to recognize the cost, you know, of.
From an actuarial perspective.
Exactly.
It doesn't necessarily mean that we're spending any more or less on health insurance.
Well, we have been spending more.
Right, I mean, but that's not what this is, this is to set aside.
This is for retirees to know that.
So you're just setting it aside.
To know that as people, as people like the three of us sitting at this table in some dream world retire, then it's, it's to make sure that funds have been set aside to pay for our other, our other retirement benefits. Not our retire, not our retirement.
Is this for future retirees or current retirees?
Well, like, we're planning to be able to pay, it's, it's a liability that you're planning to be able to pay. We want to make sure that there is money to pay when I retire, that my, my, the city responsibility, which is fifty-fifty by the way, fifty-fifty changes the percentage, the percentage change of health insurance when you retire. Right now, we're seventy-five, twenty-five for active, when you retire, it's fifty. So the city's obligation is fifty percent of our retire, of our retiree insurance. And you have to basically have that.
Right, so the.
Plan on having that available.
So where does this go?
Into, this is a stabilization, which we have.
It's a.
It's an investment.
It's a, you can't touch it, okay.
Yeah, so, so currently, the current retirees, if part of the appropriation, you'll see in the budget, which is broken down, is, you know, city employee health insurance, retiree health insurance, we're paying their current cost out of our current appropriation. The idea is that we should have had money set aside so that we're paying our current obligation, our, our future obligation from, you know, like, if I set aside enough money this year, it will pay for the people. If I did that every year for thirty years, those people would have, there would be money to pull from to pay.
It's like social security.
Right, what it really is.
It's like the way we fund our retirement too, the same thing.
So we have to.
We have to pay that.
We, we're funding as we go right now, but the idea is that you get to a place where you have enough, and you, the only amount you have to put into this fund is the annual amount, as it grows, based on the actuarial.
And this is required, it's not something we could not do.
It is.
The hundred thousand isn't required.
There is no requirement to fund it at this time, the way retirement is required. It is coming, it kept, they keep saying it's going to be required tomorrow, 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 tomorrow hasn't come yet because it bankrupts us all.
I was going to say, so this is just our way of putting in a little bit of, little money into it, to get, to get it set up.
It is already set up, this isn't brand new, this isn't brand new, it already has funds in it.
How much, how much do we have at it now?
Seven hundred.
Right, like, I, I looked at the estimate of, you know, kind of like what's been going in there yearly, and so this, you know, is a hair higher, but that's what it hurt.
So how much would have to be in there for it to be fully, I mean, what?
That's like a conversation we're having.
Like a million, something.
Well, that's the same thing, like, how much would you have to have in your retirement system? That if everybody retired today, to provide a retirement check.
You have just enough for the people who will.
Not even close.
Right.
But like, for next year, you have enough, maybe, okay.
We pay.
How many active retirees are there, do you know?
Well, active is the opposite of retirees.
Well, okay, alive.
Existing.
How many alive retirees do we have?
There we go.
Over a hundred, was it a hundred fifty, I should know.
Yeah.
Yeah, it sounds right, we talked about.
So just like we have to put money away to make sure that when somebody retires, we can actually pay them their retirement, this is the other post-employment benefit.
So let me ask you this, so if we're not even close, and the mandate hasn't come down that this is a, you got to do it kind of thing, what is the mandate going to look like, are we going to, like, be in a world of hurt?
We're going to have to appropriate several million dollars a year when it comes to.
Win and ev, win and ev.
Who the hell's going to afford that?
Nobody, that's why, that's why, like, don't you remember when all of this started, that, that's what all your actuariales are about, is, you know, making sure that you have all the funds for the, for the future.
Some funded liabilities, all that.
So people have started paying annually for them.
Right, so if you ever catch up on the retirement one, that was that two million dollars will then be replaced by this two million.
So their expectation is that you have money for years in advance to cover, in an actuarial perspective, all the hundred and fifty people, based on how long you expect them to live.
Right, because you've seen, and you've seen as a.
And the cost of healthcare.
Yeah, exactly.
Right, and knowing that, you know, increases, but you've also seen the actuariales for the retirement side of it.
If this was mandated, we wouldn't be able to pay for the active employees to actually work. I mean, we'd have to take and lay off half the employees to pay for the retirees. It just can't, it can't happen, I mean, I don't see how it's going to happen.
This is another financial planning move that.
Unfunded liability, love that word.
Exactly.
And, and, and it is reported more, it is reported more aggressively, I guess, is the word, on our year-end financials every year. And it is something that our investors, when we go to vote for a bond rating, look at, they say, well, you know, what kind of unfunded liability does this community have? And we in Massachusetts have to show that as an unfunded liability, and when we go out to bid on, for banking ratings, you know, we have to look just like every other state, and this is, this is bankrupt some states, you know what I mean? So. So you, you, you have to show it, and so part of what we get to show is, we know it's there.
We put something there, we put a little bit aside.
And we mention that, and does it help, I don't know, but it's better than ignoring it.
And also, our other stabilization funds help to demonstrate that we're trying to physically.
There's a lot of singing and dancing on the last.
I, I don't see how we can't do this, guys, what do you think? We have to support the mayor and the finance director on this one because.
And there's seven hundred thousand dollars in there now?
About it.
How about that?
So. Okay, any other questions?
Nope.
Your turn to motion, Dan.
Move, make a follow-in appropriation of a hundred thousand dollars from free cash to OPEB stabilization for the purpose of moving them into that account.
What it says. You second.
I will second it.
I was really going to say, please, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's it, anything else? And we are going to remove the ninety-five hundred from our agenda at the next meeting. And we will have a meeting next week because apparently we have something to find immediately.
Because that was the one thing I was like.
Oh, yeah, when's your next meeting?
A week from Wednesday? Is that the important thing? Oh, let's look at the calendar.
Well, not if you're not going to ask for the money.
The next week is the day before.
But I'm going to tell you why.
Hey, we have an important discussion.
Did you get a boat for sale?
Something like that.
Karen, you guys want this done, so we, our next meeting is the. Next week is the sixteenth, so.
Right.
Twenty-third is the day before Thanksgiving. Want to move it to Tuesday, the twenty-second?
I probably asked a little. No, I, oh, at five o'clock?
If we do a finance meeting, it's the night before Thanksgiving, so I don't really want to do that unless you guys are okay with that.
No, that would be wonderful to change that meeting.
The twenty-second?
Wait, you want to move it to the day before?
The twenty-second is a Tuesday.
Would.
That's the finance committee meeting.
Would we be done, I have a, a meeting at six at the high school.
Well, it's the only thing on the agenda.
Right.
I, I don't see why not.
That would be, that would.
Because we're just going to vote, no, we're not giving anybody a call.
That works good for me, well, not that part doesn't work good for me. The, changing the meeting to then where it's good for me, does that, does it work for you?
All right, well, we'll do finance on that night.
Tuesday instead of Wednesday? I, I'm loving that idea.
We have to be here until six, anyone?
What?
Wednesday.
Yeah, but you, you know, you don't have meetings every day.
No, I, no, I know.
So I'm thrilled to change that.
We have to be here, we have to be here twenty-two, at five.
Yes, the public hearing. Peg, Dan. The pub, public hearing for this is on the seventh.
They're changing the twenty-third to the twenty-second.
For the first meeting in December, I will not be there, I'll be nutcracker.
Where are, where are we again?
There's so many places I could go with that comment, but I'm not going.
Yeah.
It's all right, Peg, you have a dirty mind, we all know that.
No, that's not, you know.
That's on the record!
So it's a two-phase public hearing, because you have to do the ordinance amendment to amend classification and pay.
We're going to have.
She'll take care of this.
The money.
She'll take care of it.
Make sure that Peg, Peg or Dan, who wants to do this?
I have a final that night, I'm trying to move the final, but.
What night are we talking about, Dan, you're not here.
The seventh, Dan may not be here either, so it's going to be up.
We're in December now.
Yeah, that's the public hearing.
For the public hearing.
You better get an A on that final one. Ooh, I like them, I think.
Of course you will.
That's awesome.
So you might not be here on the seventh either, Dan?
No, I might not be.
Yeah, but all we need is Peg to.
You're performing?
I have. I have.
I'm programming buttons.
City Council?
Yes.
Is on the thirtieth.
No, December.
No.
No, there's only two meetings a month, we get an extra week.
First and third.
Oh.
First and third.
So you guys could meet at finance on the thirtieth.
I'm nearly here.
Well, I didn't think of that.
Is there another Wednesday?
We could, do we want to change it to Thursday?
Because that's, because that's the fifth Wednesday, one, two, three.
Why don't we do that instead, you want to do that?
Why are we doing it?
Are you talking about the.
Instead of the twenty-second, go to the thirtieth.
Okay.
Well, what is that?
What do you suggest, Mr. Barber, go to the thirtieth?
It buys us not having to meet on a Tuesday.
Instead of the Tuesday.
No, 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 no. What he's talking about is he's not going to be here for December seventh.
Yeah, she's just, we're jumped this new conversation, we're moving the twenty-second meeting to the thirtieth. Well, because, is that better for you, the twenty-second?
Yeah.
Looks like we're not.
She's got ribbons to cut on the thirtieth or something.
No, yeah, that's.
All right, we'll keep it on the twenty-second, it's better for me.
Okay, so then on the seventh, when we present to city council, Dan will not be there, Dan will not be there, Barbara will help me get through the variety of things. That's what I'm worried about, that, is that a problem to have your public hearing on the seventh without the two of you there, two members of finance?
You're reporting it out of finance, and it's your appropriation.
No, but I mean, you're all right with that?
I have no problem with it.
Only one member of finance.
If we vote.
I'm not trying to be there, but.
If we vote three to zero, she can report that, for instance, I don't know what to say.
This is all your CPA stuff.
You want it done, so we have to have it.
No, 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 this is, this will be the.
Oh, okay.
The COLA.
No, the CPA, the COLA thing.
Okay, that's, that's, I got that out. I got that, I got that.
We caught Karen up now.
Be okay.
Thanks, thanks.
I'm still not sure, what is happening on the seventh?
We are going to get an appropriation request.
Right, this is a super secret one that we don't have yet.
Yes, the COLA request will come to us this week.
And we're going to meet on the twenty-second.
We're going to set a public hearing for the seventh, and we're going to meet on the twenty-second as a finance committee meeting.
And vote.
Vote on it to approve it, and then on the seventh, you're going to present it.
So when are, when are we doing the stuff we talked about tonight?
Next week, I set those public hearings. Now you've caught up. Move re-adjourn, all in favor?